Cool, thank you.
Curtis and Ursula are going to be late, so we're just waiting for Steve and Jake, who are you waiting for?
Um, let's see, we have Patrick, Cindy is going to be on, Charlotte may be joining us late if she's able to at all. Uh, I'm going to do Jake Schutz's part this evening because he's like, so I think we're okay-ish, um, once we get Cindy on.
Okay. Steve, is that you?
Yes, I will be switching to an iPad in a little bit.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you were here because Curtis and Ursula are running late tonight.
We've got Cindy's on now.
Okay, great, so I think we can, hi Cindy.
Hi everybody.
I think everyone's, Joe, do you have a concern?
I was just making sure that chat was turned off, sorry.
Okay.
Don't mind me, don't worry.
All right, I would like to call the Mount Graylock Regional School District School Committee to order. It is Thursday, June 8th, 2023 at 6:01 PM. We are meeting remotely via Zoom. The meeting will be broadcast on Really Net TV Channel 1302 in Williamstown and posted to the Mount Graylock Regional School District YouTube channel within 24 hours of the meeting. If we could call the role alphabetically by last name.
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine here.
Yeah, here.
Curtis is not here.
Green eye, here.
And Ursula is not here. And I heard, thank you. Um, at Mount Graylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative-based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectation and cooperation resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. Uh, next up is public comment. I do not have anyone signed up for a public comment. If there is a member of the public that would like to make a comment, um, just a reminder that we allow three minutes per person. The topics must be something or is limited to what is on the agenda item. So if you would like to make comment, if you could let us know the agenda item you are commenting on, your name and the town you are from. I will give a few minutes. Okay, so the next thing on our agenda is the student update, but I don't think Charlotte is here. So we will move on to approval of minutes. I would like.
Christina, if I may, Charlotte, Charlotte did send her apologies in a very timely manner. She's engaged in some service work that she does out in the community and will, will try to jump on later, but I encouraged her to take care of the business she, she needs and wants to take care of and will be here if she's able to. So I just wanted to make sure that was, that was known.
Thank you. Okay, approval of minutes is next up on the agenda and I will make a motion to approve the May 11th, 2023 minutes. Would someone like to second that?
I'll second.
Julia, seconds, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Green eye.
Noah, I.
Okay, thank you, that motion passes unanimously. Next up on the agenda are principal updates. Um, I don't know, Cindy, did you want to go first, even though it's not in order on the agenda?
I absolutely can, yes. Hi, everybody, and I want to give a couple of quick updates. We are wrapping up the end of another great school year. We had a final staff meeting yesterday and one of the things that we did that was both an entrance ticket and an exit ticket for staff was for them to note something positive that they could take away from the year. And I just think it should be shared that the staff members who were present at the staff meeting yesterday continuously said messages of the positive thing they took away from this school year was how incredible it was to be back to some sense of normal, to be able to build relationships with kids, to be able to be engaged in the community again, to be able to bring back field trips and just experiences that we know have been missed over the course of the last couple of years with COVID. So just want to give everybody a shout out just in our community and our staff because it's definitely taken a village to get us all through this and I'm incredibly proud and grateful to have been able to work with the staff at Williamstown Elementary, but also to be able to help our little ones get through this. So it's a pretty special moment for us yesterday to recognize all of the goodness that has come out of it. And a biggest principal update for tonight, I have the very fortunate privilege of talking about this year's Renzi Award winners. Each year at the end of the school year, we award a Renzi Citizenship Award to students and what happens is there's a committee that consists of administration, our fifth and sixth grade teachers, our specialists in arts, music, library, PE, and social emotional learning. And we are looking for sixth graders who best exemplify the qualities of a good citizen that we value at Wes. We're looking for kindness, enthusiasm, and people who help others. Um, the award was originally established by a citizens committee to honor the career of a longtime Williamstown Elementary School teacher and administrator Helen Renzi. And every year, it's definitely a special moment that we're happy to celebrate. And this year, I'm proud to announce the 2023 winners, Zin Doucet, Sam Berry, Cortland Cart, and Andrew Holland. And we're incredibly proud of these students. As part of this honor, the school librarian Alex Scott works with students to select a book that will be kept in our collection at Williamstown Elementary School Library and they're also going to be recognized at the graduation ceremony. So gigantic shout out to those kids, we're really proud of them and we're looking forward to honoring them in a couple of weeks. Um, graduation is right around the corner, we can't believe we're here so far, but we're looking forward to what the next two weeks has in store for us. We've got a lot of activities, we've been navigating and managing, moving things around and moving stuff indoors. Um, the kids and the staff has responded amazingly as the community has and we're just, we're pretty excited that we're at the end of another school year and we're proud of all of our kids. Any questions?
Thank you.
Carrie?
Um, I have two and they're both kind of calendar oriented. Did I see that the sixth grade play happened just recently?
Yes, we just had our sixth grade musical last weekend. They went over the big one oh, it was a new presentation, a new musical for us, and which was a huge success, our sixth graders every year. And we get to the moment of the musical, we can't believe how well they do in front of hundreds of hundreds of people. I'm super proud of them, they presented five different showings of the big one oh and really proud of them, grateful for Betsy Reality for leading them through it as well.
That's great, and then secondly, when is graduation?
Graduation is going to be on the 22nd.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Uh, Steve Miller, just wanted to hear a little bit about the field trip to the Woo Sox.
Um, our sixth grade students just got back from one of their end of the year field trips. The kids chose to go to a Woo Sox game in Worcester. Um, every year at the end of the school year, Woo Sox basically opens up their stadiums to have basically a student day. Uh, the kids were able to go yesterday, they spent the day at the ballpark and they have lunch out there, great time for them to build community. Definitely a highlight for our kids is that two of our kids actually caught a ball, which was pretty cool. Um, but yeah, first of their trips, they're also headed to another trip next week to head to Six Flags to celebrate the end of their sixth grade year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
All right, I will jump in and do Jake's part. Jake is, um, over at class night celebrating our seniors' accomplishments tonight. Um, first though, I will jump in and Carrie, thank you for asking about the, uh, the sixth grade musical. It was wonderful. Uh, thematically, it was, um, just really right, uh, squarely in, um, a sixth grader's wheelhouse. So I, I found it to be as somebody that's long past sixth grade, um, really just hitting on some themes that I think most sixth graders could relate to somehow. So, you know, coming into the district and having Shrek be my first musical that I got to enjoy and then getting to see the big one oh, uh, man, I'm, I'm feel really fortunate that I'm two for two for amazing performances from our students and thanks to the hundreds of people that came out to, uh, to, to appreciate the, not only the talent, but the super hard work of, uh, of Betsy and company and her student actors and singers and dancers. Um, I'm here on behalf of Jake Schutz tonight to just add a public thank you, uh, to join the written thank you that we've already sent to the Alice Shaver Foundation, which is housed here in, in Williamstown. Um, the, the Alice Shaver Foundation annually makes two $5,000 donations to support field trips and student travel and it's a big, big deal. Um, it just allows a lot of things to happen for students that, that, uh, perhaps otherwise it wouldn't happen and then it allows for things to happen for entire groups of students to, uh, to, um, to be able to, to engage in, in learning travel experiences. Not talking about trips to Europe or, or trips overseas, but really taking advantage of some of the things that are within a day's drive, many of the rich, rich opportunities. But we continue to be very grateful to the Shaver Foundation for, for this incredible generosity and, uh, and wanted to say very public thank you through this vehicle for their generosity over the years. Thank you, Christina.
Thank you, Jake. Next up on the agenda are director reports and we have Patrick Priester speaking about the summer programming.
Yes, hello everyone, I'm here to give you a brief update on our summer programming with planning well underway. Um, I'd like to, uh, just acknowledge Chris Hacking and the rest of our staff's hard work and the planning that goes into this. It's a, it's a big task and we start in the late winter by identifying our related service people because they're kind of hard to find their license and they're just walking around on the street. So, um, we've been planning on this a couple of months now. So in Lanesboro and Williamstown Elementary Programs, we plan to offer a three-day-a-week program on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday schedule, uh, starting the week of seven-ten and going through, um, ending on Friday, eight-four, we're actually going to end that Thursday that week on a nine forty-five to one forty-five schedule. Uh, this year we do plan to offer busing, um, in towns to our elementary schools um, to provide access for our students. At Mount Graylock, uh, we are going to offer our academic skills program again, along with some credit recovery options through, uh, English and history courses as well as Edmenton Plato online courses. Uh, that will run from seven-ten, the week of seven-ten, July tenth through August eleventh on a Monday through Friday schedule, um, on an eight through, uh, eight AM to twelve PM schedule. And this summer, we do plan on sending a group to Camp Russell again. Uh, that will be the week of seven-ten and ending on Friday, eight-eleven, and that will be a Monday through Friday schedule. Uh, the students, again, we picked up in Williamstown at eight, we'll pick up a group in Lanesboro about eight-thirty. They'll get to camp around nine and they'll do the reverse starting at two o'clock in the afternoon. And we were able to place one of our, um, one of our students at the high school for BFA programming this summer um, to one of their dayhem programming, so that was, that was kind of exciting coming out of COVID. We haven't been able to do anything like that in a while and it's nice to make that connection with some of our community resources. But that's pretty much it, unless any males has any other questions? Yes, Julia?
Just a quick question, um, thank you. Uh, that sounds like it's fairly comprehensive and I, you know, can imagine how complicated that is. Um, I was thinking about the elementary school programming and working parents and I'm just wondering how much are parents engaged in setting that schedule? I'm just nine forty-five to one forty-five, I think you said, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I got stressed, so I'm just wondering how, how working parents manage that?
Um, well, again, we're, we're trying to increase access by providing busing. Um, oftentimes families are able to figure it out because, you know, the schools are located relatively in the towns and they can drop them off and go, uh, go to work and come back and pick them up around lunchtime usually. Um, one of the feedback we got from last summer was the, you know, try to avoid the Monday Fridays so that some families could take long weekends over the summer. So that's one of the adjustments we made coming into the summer. Um, and again, I know the nine forty-five to one forty-five schedule isn't necessarily ideal daytime, but we do try to, you know, reduce our programming, um, time-wise because it, you know, we're supposed to, summer programs basically are supposed to be about half the time that you would do during the year. So we try to honor that, to give our students, you know, a summer break as well that, that need that, um, that helped during summer so they don't prevent regression.
Thank you, I really appreciate hearing how you responded to parent feedback to come up with the schedule, thank you.
And staff, our staff was excited about that one too. And one of the things we, we got from our staff, you know, coming into this year, we knew that July fourth was right in the middle of the first week there in July. So we decided to honor, you know, a lot of people like to take a week off during that week, you know, they can extra day vacation they can save, so we just decided to hold off and start the week after, the holiday week. Any other questions? Thank you, Christina.
Thank you, Patrick. Okay, next up on the agenda is the superintendent report, so I'll turn it back to you, Jake.
Thank you, um, you know, first, before I get into in that agenda item, I apologize for, for my typo. Uh, it should be the state level approach to mobile phone use in schools. I cannot explain the state level, fill in the blank, but I, I think I can, can share where the state is and where the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed are in terms of cell phone usage. Uh, but first, I do want to say, um, we really appreciate the flexibility of all of the families and the guardians and the caretakers that we serve. Really, really appreciate the flexibility of our students and our staff and our faculty. Um, this, this air quality thing that's been going on that we're all very aware of, uh, has just been, um, a real wrinkle and very grateful for our, for our team, uh, coming together to think through what's appropriate, what's not. Grateful to, to, to Jeff Kennedy for weighing in from a town health department perspective, um, to our district's physician for, uh, being open to sharing her thoughts with us and, uh, and very grateful to several parents, um, reached out, you know, when it, when it became imminent that this was going to be a problem and, uh, we're, we're, we're very helpful in helping us think through this and, um, and I think we're going to continue maybe for another day or two. Uh, it seems to be difficult to pinpoint exactly when or, or how exactly this is going to, uh, to start again. So we, we are winding up this week being more cautious rather than less cautious and, and as we hit the end of the year, that does mean pushing some things off that, that kids would rather we not push off and so we would rather not push them off, but for the sake of safety, um, we are, we are going to, um, our, our, we, we, congratulations to our three teams that are continuing, uh, in the state tournament. We are being, uh, very mindful and I say we, but I really mean Lindsay Von Holtz, who has just put in additional hours and hours and hours along with her athletic director colleagues to try to figure out how to get these games in on a very tight time schedule because we are at the end of the year, but doing so in a safe way. Our coaches have been wonderful in understanding, um, what the expectations are around keeping kids healthy while we're keeping them engaged as the tournament moves forward. And our families have been very understanding, um, our tennis match may wind up being an indoor match at, uh, Bosque Sports. Um, the, the, for better, for worse, at this point in the year, the, the tennis team that we've been trying to get the match in for the last two days is driving in from Ipswich, Mass, which anyone that's been to Ipswich, that's not a jump in the car and have an enjoyable little trip. It's, it's students leaving, um, really before lunchtime to be here for after-school games. So we just, uh, want everybody to know how seriously we are taking this situation with, with the, the staff that we are honored to work with and the students that we're honored to work for. Um, we are taking this very, uh, seriously and do want to say thank you and well done to all of our teams that are in the playoffs. Uh, I know Curtis has a, a, a child that's still engaged in the state tournament on the lacrosse side and Ursula has a child at home that is still, uh, engaged on the softball side and then our tennis team is continuing and we're very excited, very proud of those, uh, student athletes. Um, so the state's approach to mobile telephones. Uh, I was on a Zoom with the commissioner and about 200 other superintendents last week. Uh, you know, when, when the report from, um, the federal level came out that, you know, basically documenting and to some degree quantifying what we all as people that have children, know children and love children have already known that, that, um, mobile phone use and in some cases the misuse is growing to the point of being really very close to, if not already crossed over into a public health crisis. Uh, the State Board of Education had a meeting, um, pretty quickly after that came out from the federal level. Uh, I, I know we certainly had some staff and there was lots of superintendent chatter about, oh, it looks like the state is maybe getting ready to do a statewide ban on cell phones in schools. Uh, I think maybe even the Boston Globe had a, had a story in that, um, or perhaps promulgated that, that notion. Uh, a couple of hundred of us heard directly from the commissioner's mouth, that is a very, very unlikely outcome that, uh, as, as we saw through, through the pandemic and as we've seen for years and years, those of us that have been doing work at, you know, where we're interacting with the department. Uh, the, this, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed values local control in the same way that the rest of the Commonwealth's government values local control as is evidenced by many, many things. So what the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed is doing, however, is instituting a, a grant program, the size of which we are unsure, uh, at this point, but, but which all districts are invited to send an email to, to a particular address to say, we think we have a solution, this is what we are going to try. Um, I, I am sure some of you locally and on the statewide level, maybe even nationally, have read about districts that have gone down the path of the, the lockable bags. Uh, I am rarely a leader that likes to jump on solutions that involve spending money on things. Um, I, we probably all have our own history and examples of the, the great thing that was offered as a solution to all of our educational problems and, um, that, that, I, I feel like as an educational institution, there are better ways to approach this than asking kids carry around kind of a puffy bag that has to be locked at the beginning of the day and unlocked at the end of the day. Um, I've observed recently, anybody that has a child in our middle school can, can, and I know some of you do, you can back me up on this, I have been fascinated, uh, as, as I go over and spend lunch with our middle schoolers at the, the playing of games that are online, but they're playing against people that are sitting beside them and across the table from them. And it's this real, you know, for, for an older person, it's a really interesting thing to observe, this activity which could be isolating, but it's actually hyper-social. And so it'll be quiet for like the two minutes that the timed game is ongoing and then there will be this explosion of cheering or sort of aw shucks that whatever was happening did not go my way. And then there's lots of conversation about what they just saw and then a couple of minutes later, the next round starts. So it, it's fascinating to watch how our students are taking what can be an isolating thing in some ways and making it into a very positive, very social thing. So, um, what we are working, uh, I, I've been working with Jake Schutz, Jake is working with the student council. I don't know that we're going to, to, to put our, our, uh, I don't know that we're going to apply to get money to, to help solve this problem. I do think there are, we have some teachers who have very effective low-tech means. When you walk into a classroom, your phone goes into a pocket and when you leave the classroom, the phone comes out of a pocket. And I think there's an opportunity here as we've been doing since cell phones became, um, much more ubiquitous in schools. There is an opportunity to try to continue to approach this from a very respectful, very thoughtful educational way rather than a, 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 a simple ban or, or the buying of a device, um, that, that, that takes away all functionality of a mobile phone. Um, particularly in a day and age when, um, you know, speaking as somebody that was the superintendent once upon a time of all three of my children. Um, there were simply times where I was very grateful that they had a phone and I could knowingly interrupt them or they could be in touch with me, even though I knew what our rules were and I knew that the timing was not perfect. Sometimes things happen from a safety perspective or from a family perspective that, um, to some degree it would feel disrespectful, both of our students and the people that, that are in homes supporting them to, to, to take such a broad-brush approach as to just simply say no. Um, so we're working on that, but I, but I wanted everybody to have clarity around what, what the state is doing and what the state's not doing. And I really think Dussie, to their credit, is doing what they do with an awful lot of things over the past few years. They are putting it out to the field and asking, who's got great solutions? Let us, as the department, be the collector of those great solutions. Let us partner with the, with the higher ed folks, the consulting folks that we work with and then we can get those great solutions back out to those of us that work in the field, trying to find what's going to be best and most respectful for learning, for, for individual teachers, for individual staff members and, and every bit as importantly for individual students and the people that support them. Um, I don't know, I do see two hands up, uh, Julia, you're the first box on my screen, so if you would go first.
Sure, um, thank you and I appreciate your perspective around this. I was thinking about other public health issues like obesity and teen pregnancy and, um, those are, I, you know, if this is of that level, which I can imagine it could be, our response to those is about education and about teaching. And I'm wondering, um, if there are ways or where there could be ways that the school, I mean, you know, we try as parents, but maybe the school feels this way too, things keep changing. Like, it's hard to keep up with the technologies as parents, I'm sure it's hard to keep up with all the technologies as, as a school, um, but ways to teach awareness around dependency, uh, you know, addiction type behaviors or, um, if where that fits into the curriculum, um, because I think that's, I, you know, one method of trying to help kids learn how to, how to live with their cellphone because they're going to always have a cellphone.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that very much and I, and I really appreciate the examples you gave of other things that the, the state and to some degree even the federal government where appropriate have really put their collective shoulder into, that's approach this educationally because that's A, what we're in the business of and expert at, but, but B, because that's what actually sticks as opposed to just blunt force, no, don't do this. Um, we, we've seen that with, uh, with chemical use and abuse, we've seen it with sex ed, we've seen it with lots of different things, so I appreciate that perspective. Carrie?
Uh, mine is somewhat similar in that I was wondering how we address.
Mine is somewhat similar in that I was wondering how we address, might address this differently at the elementary school level as opposed to the middle and high school level. So I'm curious to learn as we kind of go through the process of discovery from you know, how, how it plays out differently, because I, I don't know at what age kids are bringing cell phones to school at this point. So I would also be curious to know that.
I very much appreciate that point, Carrie. I, I tend to approach it from a middle and high school challenge perspective. My conversations with several elementary school parents, including maybe one or two that are on the screen here tonight. It, it is very real. We do, we do have students who, you know, we, our, our elementary schools go to sixth grade and, and if there is a sixth grader in the district that has not made the sales pitch for why they are safer, better educated and better poised to be a human being with a cellphone in their pocket, I would be really surprised. Observationally, I can say even at lunch at the elementary school, walking through the middle and high school lunch, although I would say that high, middle school is probably the high watermark. Observationally, if, if you were to do a, there's one, how many, how many cell phones are out in hands for 100 people? At the elementary school, it would be zero, literally, most days. At the middle and high school, I think, or at the high school, it would be I, I would say 20 to 30%. At the middle school, there are days where it looks more like 60 to 70%. So, but, but I I'm glad that you raised that point because that's a, that's sort of a good data point for us to know. Is, and, and I think the embedded in that point is the fact that I would say five years ago to 10 years ago, there maybe was not a single cellphone in the elementary school. There are certainly cell phones now in the elementary school for very, very, very legitimate reasons. Everything from safety concerns around what people observe in the rest of the country to really very, very vital health functions that, that a student who has something going on that's nuanced. You would have both a student and a parent and probably school personnel who are much more comfortable that that student is able to be in touch and the parents. So those are all pieces that we will be looking at as we, as we continue to try to approach this in a way that helps students be healthier and, and feel better. You know, what without banning a, a, what can be a powerful tool to combat isolation and what can be a powerful learning tool correctly. Trying to just pull up the agenda real quick to see. Yeah, the last thing I want to do by way of my report tonight is just it, it's always, this is my, I believe my 29th end of a school year as a, as a educator and my 24th end of a school year as an administrator. And I am no less amazed at the age of 52 that we're already at the end of the school year than I was at 23, the first year I was a English teacher that in hindsight should have been paying the school rather than the school paying me for the, for the experience. But here we are at the end of the school year. Cindy alluded to it. It's hard to believe our seniors have had their senior week this week kicking off with a, with a lovely prom at the Williams Inn. And, and, and I've not heard a negative report about the prom, which is which is really rare, including that the food was amazing, which is super rare. So, you know, it was a wonderful evening. They're celebrating class night tonight. On Saturday, they will be graduating. Their formal time with us will, will come to a close. And for some of our families, this is their last time coming into, to our school as, as the parent of a current student. And so it's hard to believe we've gotten here our sixth graders. The, the, the Lanesboro Elementary students, the sixth grade had a wonderful trip to the Cape. And I would guess that a week later, they're almost recovered from at least the grownups. The kids were, I think, better to go a few days earlier. And so we're, we're grateful to the folks that made that happen. You heard about the Woo Sox game, you, you know, the, the energy in the sixth grades is sort of slowly building. The, the musical was a big jump up in energy level. So, you know, I, I always try to stop and think it this year. At this point in the year, how grateful I am. It, it just to, to move a machine of this size, doing the, the importance of the work that we do as a school system and as individual schools and as classrooms. Just an amazing number of moving pieces. And I just want to say out loud and in public, very grateful to everybody that allows us to take this 180 day journey every year. It's truly a community effort. As we get ready to go into Lanesboro Town Meeting next week, reminded of the Williamstown Town Meeting a couple of weeks ago. These people who gather to make sure that we have adequate funding and that we can provide what we need to and want to for our students. To the students themselves, to the families that support those students and support the work of the school and that hold us accountable and help us understand where we've fallen short and how we can do better. And very grateful to all of them and very grateful to the staff and to the faculty that it start this 180 day journey anew every year. Very grateful to you all for your your, your oversight and your formal roles, but also grateful for your more informal roles, which are just conversation and problem solving and helping us to, to understand our jobs better and how we can better serve. Just grateful to everybody. Thank you to everybody involved for this 22, 23 school year where we have kind of returned to normal. I think we all entered the year and finished the year with a real appreciation of how fortunate we are to get together together to do school. And so, so thanks to all of you and thanks to anybody who hears this for the support. Carrie?
A similar question to before. When is the sixth grade graduation in Lanesboro?
Did I see it? Nolan, when is, if you can jump on and if you're there? I wish I could tell you exactly, Carrie. I believe that it, it's either the 22nd or the 21st. I will get
Williams Town's the 22nd, then 21st?
Yeah, yes.
Great.
The, a nuance of the school year, if you remember, is that the day before Thanksgiving break, there was a water main break right in front of the school at Williamstown Elementary. And, and so we're a day behind for Williamstown Elementary. I know Jose remembers because I spoke to him early that morning. Thank you, Jose, for, for the, that conversation. But so we're, we're a day apart with the end of year festivities for the elementary schools. So thank you all for the, for the time to say those things.
Thanks, Jake. Okay, next up is the field and track project funding update. Carrie?
Thanks, Christina. So Williamstown Town Meeting did pass the track and field borrowing. And we're looking forward to a positive result from the town of Lanesboro on the 13th. I was hoping to get an update from Christina, Ursula and Curtis perhaps on any effort that might have been done to educate voters in Lanesboro about the Warren article. Also wondering if it would be helpful to have printed materials at town meeting. So I know in Williamstown, voters did appreciate being able to look through the FAQ that was printed as well as the stabilization fund handout. I did notice that both the FAQ and the stabilization fund were supported by the selectmen and the finance committee in Lanesboro. And that stated on the Warren article, which is excellent. So many thanks to our town officials in the town of Lanesboro for supporting those two important Warren articles. Just hoping to do anything that we can to be helpful to educate folks who may be coming into town meeting and wondering, you know, what those Warren articles entail.
Thanks, Carrie. So we have all of the literature and hope to do something similar to what, I think it was you and Julia who stood at the table. And we'll have the, the bigger sort of site maps for people to look at and, and all of that accompanying material. We've had parents at the track meets handing out business cards. Curtis and I have visited the post office and the transfer station and the library and stood outside and chatted with people. And I believe Ursula was able to attend the big tag sale that the town of Lanesboro has for their scholarship fund. So we've been trying to get the word out on our end. There isn't a, unfortunately, we Lanesboro doesn't have the same community center to grab a ton of people out all at once. So it's been a little challenging in that, in that way. But they've been hitting the ground trying to get the word out. And then there's social media and all those groups as well.
So I assume parents of students have gotten the message to try to attend town meeting. And is there childcare available?
That is a good question and I'm not sure. I don't know if Nolan might know about that, but I, I don't, I don't know. In the past, there's been students who've come and, you know, been around so that the kids can go outside and play in the playground. But, you know, I don't know, unfortunately.
Okay. Jake, do you know, and do you also know if anyone took advantage of the childcare that we offered for the Williamstown Town Meeting?
We had, I believe two children perhaps from the same family that were, that, that were there. And, and we are doing some work to see what we can pull together for childcare at Lanesboro, Carrie.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, Julia?
Is I, I, is the school able to do anything to also just encourage parents to go to that?
We, we are able to encourage folks to go to their, to their town meeting. We for our own internal policies, using things like the phone system or our email all system, we try not to do that. We try to save those for really really directly school related. I, I do know some folks that are very interested in certain pieces of the, the town meeting warrant for Lanesboro have been very active in making sure that, you know, folks know that it's their town. And this is the one time annually that you really, really get to weigh in on big, big matters. So yeah, it's, it's to, to me, it's always, there's like the legal line of what we can do. And then there's the, the, the what makes sense to be respectful partners with the town around letting folks know. But we can certainly let folks know in, in appropriate ways, Julia.
Thank you.
And I assume Jake, that you'll be going to town meeting to answer questions about the budget. And Joe, will you be there as well? So you can address questions about the track and field of Christina or anybody else?
Wouldn't miss it for anything.
Great. So in the event that it, the track and field warrant article passes along with stabilization fund and the Mount Greylock budget. We'll be moving forward with the construction documents that we have in place. The school committee hasn't yet voted those construction documents, but we do have them. They did come back to us after a couple of reviews by administration. And Joe, do we have a set that we're ready to vote?
I, I, I think we'll, we'll get those, we'll probably hold another meeting of the field and track committee just to be able to, to review them. And then we will, we'll get them forward for either the July or August meeting to the full school committee. We'll, we'll distribute them well ahead and we can get a vote on, yeah.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. That's it for me.
Awesome. Thank you. I'd like to point out, we are on schedule right now, school committee. I'm very proud of everyone. Next up on the agenda is the finance subcommittee report.
So I wasn't able to make the finance subcommittee, so I'm going to rely on Joe and Steve to report on that.
Steve, do you want me to speak or do you want to lead?
You, you, you can lead. I mean, it was basically just the standard meeting of approving the warrants and talking a little bit about, you know, the pipeline for the field votes.
Yeah, so that, just to follow along with the agenda things, within the Williamstown Elementary School outdoor spaces, we're convening a, a number of different stakeholders and groups, trying to make sure we've got all the input we need. You know, that always takes more time than, than we would love. But I think we're moving along in a way that is making sure that we, that we get it right for the next 20 or 30 years. And so we're going to have more updates as we move into July and August. And I think that is the update for right now on the elementary school outdoor spaces. Was there anything else from the finance committee members?
Well, did you want me to talk a little bit about the Moody's rating?
That's the next item. And so yes, it, it makes sense to do that.
So just briefly, your hats off to Joe and the entire team and the administration for the excellent work they did to get us, you know, such a great deal. You're essentially the only category where we were not at the highest level was due to some requirements from the state that does not allow us to have more than, you know, 5% or effectively about 4.5% in our E and D accounts. And Moody, because they do business across the country, they deal with places that can have that as high as I believe 10%. But other than that, you know, all of our stuff across the board was, you know, outstanding and we were able to get a very good rate that had a lot of interest, I think, when you put it out.
Yes, yeah, we, we had effectively the highest rating that within our structure we're, we're able to have. And then we ended up with five bidders on, on our call for bids on, on the bonding. And what you have in your packet is the end result, which is we'll be asking the school committee tonight to vote to approve the final borrowing for the Mount Greylock Regional School Building Project as presented within the packet. Within that packet item, you have all of the details of the annual amounts that we will be paying associated with this borrowing that go on top of the 2016 borrowing that was the original for the building project.
Steve, did you want to move that?
Sure, I'm happy to move that.
All right, I'm happy to second it. So everybody knows which document we're talking about, right? This is the vote of the Regional School District School Committee to approve the final borrowing. Is there any discussion? All right, let's vote.
Oh, and I.
Henry, I.
Constantine, I.
Green, I.
Miller enthusiastically, I.
Great, that motion passes.
And, and it is something to celebrate because that was the final vote of the Mount Greylock Regional School Building Project ever, final of maybe thousands. ever, final of maybe thousands that have happened, honestly, over the course of and and Carrie and Steve have. I think they are the two who have really been around. I mean, it it's it's remarkable how much blood, sweat and tears, all of them it it takes to to construct a building. So thank you. And it is now done.
So many others in the community, yeah.
It would take us, it would take us too long to list everybody, but I want to explicitly thank Al Terranova and John Scavlam for their wonderful service over the years, as well as everyone in the community who came forward and gave us input on how to do this as best as possible for the community.
And I'll add to that Paula Consolini and Mark Sheek, who were the co-chairs of the school building committee for a very long time.
Oh, sorry, we go all the way back to that. That's right.
All right. So the the final item within the finance so committee report was a preliminary FY23 fourth quarter budget update. The finance subcommittee, we're we are just starting in on on the task of trying to close things out as cleanly and elegantly as we can. As we have been signaling for the last many months now, our substitute costs as well as our out of district tuition costs have have gone way beyond what we had budgeted. We have been able to rein in some other lines within the budget. But, you know, those savings are not going to be complete. So we'll be bringing forward some numbers that that certainly decrease the balances and revolving accounts more than we would like. But we're going to get that all finalized here over the next, I would say it'll be about the next month. The finance subcommittee meeting next week, we'll we'll kind of take a first crack at at some, yes, that looks like a good way to handle it type type efforts. And then a couple of weeks later, we'll have another finance subcommittee meeting that will hopefully signal, closing out a lot of the figuring out where fund balances will end and being able to to really take a look at what that means for FY24 and how we will live within our means for for the coming year. I'm more thankful than ever right now that that within the FY24 budget, we really did beef up certain areas of the budget to ensure that that we've got a good shot at being fiscally responsible. It it never feels good trying to take from some people's lines and put it into others and and declare that the money is gone and that we need to reel it in. But that's a lot of what we've had to do through circumstances that we're really out of most people or all people's control here. So we've just tried to make sure that we that we budgeted conservatively for next year so that if if the worst case happens, we'll we'll be prepared. So that's our update for now, but we'll have more over the next. Realistically, it's probably two months of school committee meetings, but over the next month of finance committee meetings.
Thank you, Joe. And Christina, before we close out, I just want to mention that there's a new ad hoc committee in Williamstown to look at long term debt brought by the schools, the town, the fire district and the water quality district. And I'll be serving on that as a representative of the schools, but Joe will also be participating in that as the person who knows most about, you know, the debt that the school brings to the towns. So just wanted to to mention that before it shows up in papers and such.
Thanks, Carrie. Okay, next up on the agenda, policy and governance subcommittee report, Jose.
Right, I I promise to keep us well ahead of schedule here. First up on our docket is policy DK, which is been a long time coming, the regional school district payment procedures after fierce debate and fierce dialogue, I'm proud to say that the finance and governance subcommittee has unanimously moved this policy to the floor of the full committee. So would anyone like to second this motion?
Miller, I'll second.
We're seconds. Any discussion?
Thank you.
It took us a while, but we got there. We we got here.
And for the listening public, there is sarcasm in Jose's voice, in Jose's words, just want to be clear. For those who don't know him.
It was very, very little, very little debate. No debate. But it's hearing, seeing, no, no discussion, roll call, vote, alphabet order.
Oh, and I.
Henry, I.
Constantine, I.
Green, I.
Miller, fifthly, I.
The motion passes to adopt policy DK regional school district payment procedures. We're just going to, well, it's listed that it's not a discussion item, but you can see there's policy I J L library material material selection policy that is in the packet as an information or informational item. This is a a policy that the policy and governance subcommittee will be reviewing at an upcoming meeting. That leads us to policy BEDH on public comment. The our subcommittee would like to provide a first read of this policy, which will then provide an opportunity for discussion. We don't have Curtis's voice. I'm happy to do it, Julia. We could do rock, paper, scissors and see who does it. All right, here we go. This is a policy BEDH, public comment at school committee meetings. This is also in our meeting packet. All regular and special meetings of the school committee shall be open to the public. Executive sessions will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The school committee desires citizens of the district to attend its meetings so that they may become better acquainted with the operations and the programs of our local public schools. In addition, the committee would like the opportunity to hear the wishes and ideas of the public in order that all citizens who wish to be heard before the committee have a chance and to ensure the ability of the committee to conduct the district's business in an orderly manner, the following rules and procedures are adopted. One, at each regularly scheduled school committee meeting, individuals or group representatives will be invited to address the committee. The chair shall determine the length of the public participation segment. One A, when the meeting is in person, speakers may sign up at the start of the meeting and will be solicited at the start of public comment. One B, when the meeting is virtual, speakers may request to be recognized via spoken intent, the chat feature or the reactions feature. One C, written material, either hard copy or email, sent at least two hours in advance, may be included in the meeting packet upon request, but will not be read aloud at the meeting. Two, all remarks will be addressed through the presiding chair of the meeting. Three, speakers will be allowed three minutes to present their material. The presiding chair may permit extension of this time limit. Four, topics for discussion must be limited to those items listed in the school committee meeting agenda for that evening. Five, improper conduct and remarks will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. If a speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks, the chair may terminate that individual's privilege of address. Six, discussion of individual personal matters will be prohibited. Speakers may offer such objective criticisms of the school operations and programs as concern them. But in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel, nor against any member of the school community. Under most circumstances, administrative channels are the proper means for disposition of legitimate complaints involving staff members. Seven, written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the committee before or after the meeting for the committee members' review and consideration at an appropriate time. Eight, typically, the school committee does not respond to public comment. Only the superintendent, the chairperson, or other members of the committee at the chairperson's discretion will make responses to concerns raised during public comment. Nine, votes will not be taken on matters raised during public comment. I'd like to open us up for this this for discussion. But would also like to acknowledge that point five on improper conduct and remarks will not be allowed. That is something that we, I think, are awaiting feedback on given recent decisions by state or our 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 state court. So we're waiting feedback on whether or how that that the particular point may need to be amended. Julia.
Uh, one other thing I just wanted to share for context. The committee reviewed policies BEDH, which was public comment at school committee meetings, and that's what Jose just read. BEDH dash E, which is guidelines for public comment. And BEDH dash R, which is guidelines for remote meeting public comment. And the overlap of these three policies I was very clear and it wasn't clear why we had to have three different policies to address public comment. And so this policy is edited to hopefully make obsolete or unnecessary BED, BEDHE and BEDHR. I don't know if there's an action we have to take to like sunset those policies because they will at present not necessarily be aligned with this, but I think we need to, you know, say that as well.
Yeah. So so feedback on on this and and this particular, the plan that Julia just 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 brought brought forward. We'd love feedback on.
Jose, quick comment from Steve?
Yes, Stephen.
So I don't, so I I I liked how Julia gave us context in terms of what is going on. I may be misremembering, but I thought years ago someone told me that what we're technically doing is we are having a meeting in public, not a public meeting. And that's why the comments and the discussions are structured the way they are, which is often confusing to members of the community as to why are we not responding? And the reason we're not responding is we're meeting in public. It's not a public meeting. I might be wrong and I would be grateful if I am, if somebody could point that out. But if that's correct, it might be worth putting in. I don't know, it's a comment just to so that when people are reading this, this is why we're doing it the way we're doing it because we are meeting in public, but it's not a public meeting.
Right. Yeah, thank you, Stephen. That that came up in in the subcommittee's discussion of this policy and we will definitely take, I think, your your feedback into consideration when we visit this again. Jake, I think you you put it really well about, you know, what what the purpose of this meeting is. It's the business meeting of of the school committee and and that, I think, I think similar to what Stephen just said, kind of provide some context for how we uh deal with public comment. But thank you, Stephen.
Yep. And again, this is just to explain, and I think it's actually wonderful if we're able to do this for some of our policies so that when people are looking at them in the future, they remember why are we doing it this way? Why is it structured this way?
That's a great point. Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Christina.
Two things in one B, we talk about recognizing people through the chat feature, but we typically disable the chat feature during our meetings.
Thank you, Christina. Thank you. So I think.
Do you want to keep that?
Yeah, sorry, Stephen. Yeah.
No, I was gonna say, do you want to keep that just in case we decide that, you know, for some meeting, we do want to have the chat feature enabled, this then just gives us how to handle that, even though the default would be to have it disabled?
Christina, do you see an issue with having having it listed there, even though typically we don't, we we disable the chat? Like if it were to stay, do you see?
I almost think we should remove both of those things, only because right now we're in the realm of Zoom and they have chat features and reaction, but we may move to another platform and then that that becomes useless. It's more of a the chair recognizes, you know, has to recognize this, the speaker to speak, I guess.
I mean, we could, we could think about language that makes it maybe a bit more ambiguous, but but more flexible, something along the lines of, you know, recognizing via spoken intent or some other manner. Something, you know, that might speak to a reaction button or or a chat feature.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you say by raise by raising your hand or or verbally or by raising your hand and raising your hand could mean this or it could mean raising your hand through the at the moment, as Christina points out, reactions, but something else in the future.
Right, right. Well, well, I think I I think it's a good, that's great feedback, Christina, and I think it's something we'll definitely include in our in our edits of the next next draft.
Okay. And the other thing I have is item two and item eight. So it's almost like item eight is the explanation of number two because the chair doesn't address the speaker. They they call on the speaker. Like I get caught up in the word address because it almost seems like if the speaker makes a public comment, the chair is going to respond back. They're going to address the speaker.
It could be, this is something I think we had, we was is is a legacy, legacy text from our existing policy. So I think what you're, if I understand you correctly, Christina, the concern with the language as as we have it now is that it it might speak to some kind of responsibility by the chair to respond to particular comments. Okay.
And 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 aid it, it's, you know, it becomes quite clear that the school committee isn't going to respond to the public comment.
It could be that we don't need to. So I mean, if we if two gets removed altogether, I don't I don't know if we lose anything. Carrie?
So it 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 sounds like this is a leftover from remarks will be addressed to the chair. Right? Because that's what we used to do when we met in person. Right? That you're speaking to the committee through the chair, but that you're not to like ask. Yeah, I mean, that it is a formality, but I don't know that it makes sense when you're on a screen because you're not addressing any one person on a screen.
This would be good if if we given care that you that you have some sense of why that text is in there. If and when we were to return back to in-person meetings, do you see the need for that text to persist? You know, like, I think, you know, if we're if we're moving towards deleting it, does any issue with that?
Well, it's kind of like a town meeting where you're supposed to address the town moderator and not turn around and address
Right, okay.
members of the audience.
Got it.
It's a way of directing the speaker. And then if anyone is going to respond, it has to be through the chair to respond, right? And that's part, that's what that other
Okay.
comment is about.
Or it could be the chair recognizing someone to respond.
Well, that's what I meant. Yeah.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
All right, I'm looking at Julia.
I I mean, I think we can, I understand the question. I feel like we can probably take that offline and work on the language.
Okay. Any other comments or or questions?
Um, one other question. The there's mention of items being included in the emails being included in the packet if they're provided within a certain amount of time is two, okay, so it's kind of A certain amount of time is two, okay, so it's kind of a two-part question. Is two hours enough time for the district to be able to post an email that's received in the packet? That's a really short window of time. If our meetings start at six and we get an email at four, it's unlikely that's going to show up. In the packet, um, because that involves, um, a bit of effort. I, I don't know if it's important to indicate that. When we as a school committee receive emails from the public, they are public record. Um, or if there's a way to indicate if you are submitting your comment within. A certain amount of time in writing and request to have it be placed in the packet, kind of a thing. Uh, it's one of those, um, fairness things that I'm always worried about that, um. It, it may be perceived by the public that we're including some emails in the packet and not others based on the content. Um, so I, I'm just a little bit sensitive about making sure we're handling those in some type of equal manner.
I think I, I can see or imagine, I think Julia, I'm sure. We're on the same boat here. I can imagine some language that we could put into, uh, one C. Um, that I think might address that concern. So, so emails that we receive, you know, um. You know, communicated with the intent for those emails to be a part of, of the meeting packet will then, you know. Be a part of the meeting packet. I can imagine language like that.
It, it does say in there upon request. But, but maybe we clarify. Something like, we won't put them in there if it is not requested. You know, something just clarifying that, uh. And so I, I have captured that and, and then I guess the question still remains though, is two hours sufficient? Cause I understand that concern too. Especially we're in person. At the question from a woman who's never had a school committee meeting in person. Uh, do we print packets or are they always just digital? Cause printing also would take more time.
Yeah, we used to, but, but there's no reason to do it now.
Well, the, the other thing is for putting something in the packet, there's putting in the packet before the meeting. And then there's putting it in the packet in the meeting documents after the meeting, which is just an online resource. And so maybe the way to phrase it is to ensure that the. Correspondence is included before the meeting, it must be, you know, it should be received at least this far in advance. And then otherwise we can just post it afterwards and it can be, you know, part of the record. But it doesn't have to be then included in the, you know, public documents, you know, if somebody gives us something at five fifty-eight.
But it, it, we haven't addressed the core question, which is whether people should opt in or opt out. Right? It could be that if you write public comment to the school committee regarding an item on the agenda at the meeting. Your. Um, comment will automatically be included in the public document, whether it's before or after. Unless you say you don't want it. It's still a public document. But you can choose to have it excluded. Otherwise people have to know to ask. In order to have it included.
I, I would vote for opt-in and just whenever we get something, ask people explicitly, do you want this included or not? Because some people might write differently if they know it's going to be in by more than just the school committee.
And Christina, do you do that when people write public comment? Do you ask them if they want it included?
Typically, if they're the. It's tricky because somebody might write a. A comment, but not say this is public comment, right? So they might express an opinion to the school committee or to the chair based on a, a topic. So if they expressively say, this, you know, this is meant to be public comment. Then I do ask them, you know, if they would like it to be included, um, in the packet. Um, but it's tricky, right? Cause sometimes they don't say this is meant to be public comment. They just write an opinion.
So maybe that's something that could be included in the policy that you. Must write public comment in order for it to be considered part of the packet. I don't.
Yeah, I think, I think we'll work on that, on the text for that and, you know, in one seed to make that, um, clearer. The, uh, do you have a sense, Christina, in terms of? How late? We can receive emails, you know, be, before it becomes too late. For it to, you know, really become a part of a meeting packet. Do you think four hours, six hours? What, what's your sense? Jake as well.
We might want to ask Carol, um, because she's really one, and, and so it's something like I. I may be monitoring my email prior to a school committee meeting because it's. You know, on the forefront of my mind, but Carol may not be because she's doing all of her other million things. So it would require me to catch that email and say, hey, Carol.
Right, right.
Um, yeah, so I almost think hours isn't enough.
I will, I will ask Carol, Jose, and, um. Yeah, I, I would think like noon or one o'clock would be, but I'll ask Carol and we'll get some specific.
Okay.
Info on that. Thank you.
And Jake, just checking, we have multiple people who are able to add that to the packet, correct?
We do. We do, Steve.
Cause, cause you know, you can post the stuff, you know, in advance and then you might be unavailable that afternoon.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? I'm looking at Christina in the hope, with the hope that this looks good-ish.
I have no more comments or questions.
All right. I see Charlotte has joined us, which is a wonderful surprise. Um, so I am, I am done, Christina. I will see, see the floor zoom microphone.
Hey, thank you, Jose. So we are going to go back to our student update portion of the agenda. And open the floor to Charlotte.
Hi, everyone. I'm really sorry I caused the change in the meeting schedule tonight. I just had something I couldn't move, but I'm glad I still could make it. For most clubs like Register, Educate, Vote, uh, the Multicultural Student Union and the Youth Environmental Squad. Most of the meetings have been wrapping up and finishing in the past couple of weeks. And for student council, we had our internal elections and our new president is Lucy McQueeney. And for each high school grade, they elected their own presidential cabinet for fundraising and class duties. AP, APs finished around mid-May and students should see their results early July, but now we are moving into finals week. Every senior had their finals early and will be graduating this Saturday. They had prom at Williams Inn on Monday and then their class trip to Boston on Wednesday. They went to the aquarium and had a, and went around on the water. The school hosted awards night last Thursday showcasing students, students dedication to academics and the Mount Greylock Way. Students were also able to be showcased during the Mass Moca Teen Invitational. However, I did forget to mention that in the May meeting. Twenty students from Mount Greylock were recognized and art teachers Jane Ellen DeSoma and Karen, Karen Stack were awarded for the Phoebe Pepper Award. And received five hundred dollars at the ceremony for their dedication to cultivating and supporting high school student artists. Spring sports have slowly been wrapping up. Girls lacrosse for West, won Western Mass for the second year in the wo, year, in the second year in the row. And softball has moved on to the round of eight as well as girls lacrosse. Girls tennis will be playing their Sweet Sixteen match tomorrow. And track and field had an incredibly successful season with multiple students being able to compete at All States and E6. The school recently showed its support for gun violence awareness in schools by wearing orange on June 2nd, organized through Rev Club. And this Friday by the GSA Greylock Sexual Awareness Club, they will be running a wear or rate, wear rainbow to shore. Show support for Pride Month. I'm incredibly grateful to have had this opportunity each month to feature what Mount Greylock students and student council has been doing. And thank you so much and I hope you all have a wonderful summer.
Thank you so much, Charlotte. We always enjoy your updates.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Okay, next up on the agenda, business administration report.
And I can keep this one simple in that, um, our projects at both elementary schools related to the HVACC systems. Are thankfully coming to a close. Um, the Williamson Elementary School, um, project was recently inspected. Passed with flying colors, um, and we, we have a few, uh, kind of subsidiary projects that need to happen. All of both are, are well within budget, which is great. Um, and then just to address one question that I know I was asked a few times today. Um, our schools are still running some COVID era MERV thirteen type filters. Which scrub particulates out of the air that are not scrub, but catch particulates that are small enough that they're related to smoke. But not all of our filters are of that variety. Uh, and so if air is being recirculated within the building, um, it has a high likelihood of, of going through one of those filters. Um, but it's not guaranteed for, for every breath that you take. Um, so that's just one little, one little note, because I know it's, it's been on people's minds over, over the last couple of days. Um, and that's all I had on a facilities update.
Great, thanks, Joe. Okay, um, school committee retreat, July eleventh, planning. Um, I have received feedback from at least one member. Um, not a ton, so, um, I'm just gonna, I have a. Sort of, it's probably going to be a two-part, uh, retreat. Uh, one part being the revisiting of the superintendent goals that we talked about a bit in our last meeting. Um, and then the other part would be around building community within our seven-person. Um, school committee within the, um, you know, sort of under the, uh, umbrella of. Open meeting, um, and the, the difficulty in creating sort of that community feeling when you're, when you're in the public eye. And so I'm hoping that, um, Julia is going to work with me a bit on that. To help facilitate that retreat. Any questions, discussions? Okay. Moving on to the M A S E division update.
I don't have any updates this month.
Okay.
About ten minutes.
Buying so much time. Upcoming meetings and important dates. We have the Lanesboro Town Meeting, June thirteenth at Lanesboro Elementary School, six P M. Lanesboro voters, go to the meeting and just go, it, it's so much fun. Um, finance subcommittee, June fifteenth at four P M. The school committee retreat, uh, Tuesday, July eleventh. It's in person at in room ten. Hundred nine A, is it really a hundred nine?
One, one oh nine A.
Um, and that will be from five to nine and then our next regularly, regularly scheduled school committee meeting is July thirteenth at six P M. I do not have any other items for discussion, any agenda requests for our July. Carrie?
Um, can we talk about meeting in person? You know, speaking of building community, um, I, I would like to potentially discuss. Having our regular meetings in person and then subcommittee meetings could be online if the committee so chose.
Okay, I think that is a great, um, discussion to put on our agenda for our next meeting.
Or the retreat?
Or the retreat, yeah.
Okay. And can I just ask for clarification? Um, do we have any administrators attending our retreat or is it just school committee?
I think Jake and Joe were going to participate.
We, we, we will participate if, if the planning suggests, hello Curtis, uh, that it would be, um. Beneficial to have others, particularly principals, we can certainly work to that end too, Carrie.
Great, thanks.
And, um, also for further clarification, as Charlotte was talking. I recalled that I have been saving big printouts of field and track. Specifically track accomplishments in the Berkshire Eagle. Because I thought it would be nice to have that information on our information table at the Lanesboro Town Meeting. And then I have this really funny printout of our current track. To go alongside with it, um, cause Jake sent me a picture. I, I honestly had no idea we had a track and Jake sent me a picture of the track with all of the, um. Hurdles set up and I was just flabbergasted and in juxtaposition with how well the track and field. Team did this year, it was, um, it was eye-opening. Okay. Anything else for agenda requests? Okay, I would like to make a motion to enter into executive session with intent to return to open session pursuant to MGL. Chapter thirty A, A, section twenty-one, A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations. With non-union personnel, all non-union staff contracts. B, section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, all bargaining units.
I'll second that.
No.
Okay, thank you. So we will move into executive session at seven twenty-six. And when we arrive in there, we can declare our aloneness. Um, all in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Justin, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green eye.
Miller, I.
Hey, thank you.
Was having a lot of trouble with that, Curtis, until you got here. Now I feel much better.
Yeah.
Are we good? Are we missing anyone?
If I, I want to be really careful not to. Okay, so we're back into room one. Um, I don't want to do anything that's going to cut us off altogether and mess us up. So I'm just not gonna do anything. And I, I think we're, we're still recording. So I think we're okay.
Okay with, okay with willing that too.
Um, I don't have anything back from Jack, but if we're recording, we should be okay.
We are.
I just moved from my cellphone to the iPad. And when I joined on the iPad, it said recording.
Uh huh. And Jack just said, we're all set. So thank you, Jack, as always.
Okay, it is eight twenty-six. We are back in open session. Um, and next up. Okay. Next on our agenda is the collective bargaining agreements, um, three-year contracts for FY twenty twenty-four to FY twenty twenty-six. And before we move ahead with the votes that we have on our agenda, uh, the school committee would like to invite Jake to speak on our behalf. And I turn it over to you, Jake.
Thank you, Christina. Just, just to provide a, a few, um, moments of context for these contract negotiations. Um, we, we with, with the, the okay of the school committee entered into negotiations with all of our collective, uh, bargaining units, the, the Mount Greylock Educators Association, which includes teachers, nurses, counselors, all of the folks, um, who make the schools work and also includes our paraprofessionals, our custodians and our cafeteria workers. And, uh, we, we again, with the encouragement of the school committee and with, um, really partnering with a capital P with, with Magia, with, with the educators association here in the district. We, we began in the winter, in January, doing bargaining that's not quite like the way any of us have done it before. It was in many ways non-traditional. And I, and I can't and won't divulge too many details because we're voting on this contract tonight and Magia has a vote upcoming. Uh, we will be doing a press release when we're done to, to talk about it, um, pending successful votes. Uh, but, but it, but I do have to say a, a couple of things about this process and about the outcome. Um, the first is to thank the school committee for helping, um, those of us that were engaged in the negotiations, Jonathan Knopper, our human resources facilitator, and Joe Bergeron, our school business official, and myself. Uh, the school committee gave us very clear philosophical foundations. We had very clear budgetary foundations. Um, and, and we knew from our school committee that we were on safe ground in saying that, uh, just like a budget in many ways is, is a moral document and is an ethical document, is a document that talks about what you believe in. A collective bargaining agreement is every one of those things as well. And, uh, so we then entered in with the support of the school committee to bargaining sessions that included really all of our units represented. Oftentimes.
Are we good? Are we missing anyone?
If I, I want to be really careful not to. Okay, so we're back into room one. Um, I don't want to do anything that's going to cut us off altogether and mess us up. So I'm just not gonna do anything. And I, I think we're, we're still recording. So I think we're okay.
Okay with, okay with willing that too.
Um, I don't have anything back from Jack, but if we're recording, we should be okay.
Really nuts on, really nuts on Loco.
I just moved from my cellphone to the iPad. And when I joined on the iPad, it said recording.
And Jack just said, we're all set. So thank you, Jack, as always.
Okay, it is eight twenty-six. We are back in open session. Um, and next up. And before we move ahead with the votes that we have on our agenda, uh, the school committee would like to invite Jake to speak on our behalf. And I turn it over to you, Jake.
Thank you, Christina. Just, just to provide a, a few, um, moments of context for these contract negotiations. Um, we, we with, with the, the okay of the school committee entered into negotiations with all of our collective, uh, bargaining units, the, the Mount Greylock Educators Association, which includes teachers, nurses, counselors, all of the folks um, who make the schools work and also includes, uh, our paraprofessionals, our custodians and our cafeteria workers. And, uh, we, we again, with the encouragement of the school committee and with, um, really partnering with a capital P with, with Magia, with, with the educators association here in the district. We, we began in the winter in January doing bargaining that's not quite like the way any of us have done it before. It was in many ways non-traditional and I, and I can't and won't divulge too many details because we're voting on this contract tonight. And media has a vote upcoming. Uh, we will be doing a press release when we're done to, to talk about it. Um, pending successful votes. Uh, but, but it, but I do have to say a, a couple of things about this process and about the outcome. Um, the first is to thank the school committee for helping, um, those of us that were engaged in the negotiations, Jonathan Knopper, our human resources facilitator and Joe Bergeron, our school business official and myself. Uh, the school committee gave us very clear philosophical foundations. We had very clear budgetary foundations. Um, and, and we knew from our school committee that we were on safe ground and saying that, uh, just like a budget in many ways is, is a moral document and is an ethical document, is a document that talks about what you believe in. A collective bargaining agreement is every one of those things as well. And, uh, so we then entered in with the support of the school committee to bargaining sessions that included really all of our units represented. Oftentimes, all in one, one voice and everybody hearing everything. And I, again, I don't want to go into too much detail, but just as I have to say, thank you to our school committee for their support in doing this the right way. For the good of the people that do the work to educate children and support children and take care of children in the school district. Uh, many, many thanks to Magia itself, to that Mount Greylock Educators Association, who, who really stepped into these sessions and, um, understood that one, one thing we were trying to accomplish was to have every single person that works in this district feel valued and respected every two weeks when they receive their pay statement. And that, that can only be done in an environment where people are willing to, um, look out for the people that they work alongside of every day in the school. And, um, and, and I have in twenty-nine years of being a public school educator and twenty-four years of being a public school administrator. I've never seen anything quite like this. And we hope that we have the opportunity to share more details once these, this contract is, um, these contracts are ratified and approved. But, um, we could not be where we are now. Uh, with, with, I hope all parties feeling as positively, not only about the experience leading up to it, but the outcomes. Without just a true team effort of everybody involved from the elected officials to, um, the folks that came in week after week after week, we met every Tuesday starting in January. And, uh, it, it was an extraordinary time together. And it wasn't always easy, but, but I think we got outcomes that, um, that make us a more equitable district. And it, and it's, it's a real, real deep and sincere thank you to everybody involved uh, on, on all sides of the table. So thank you for allowing me that opportunity to say that.
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you, Jake. Okay, so I would like to make a motion to approve the educators and professional staff collective bargaining agreement as presented, subject to approval by the union. Do I have a second?
Second. Curtis can have it.
All right, Curtis, seconds. Any discussion?
Just many thanks as well to our administrative team and to the, uh, Mount Greylock Educators Association and all of the collective bargaining nets. Really grateful.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Konstantin, I.
Elfenbein, I.
Green, I.
Mila, I.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. I'd like to make a motion to approve the educational and support personnel collective bargaining agreement as presented, subject to approval by the union. Do I have a second?
Second.
Julia, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Bo and I.
Henry, I.
Konstantin, I.
Elfenbein, I.
Green, I.
Mila, I.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the cafeteria workers collective bargaining agreement as presented, subject to approval by the union. Do I have a second?
Second.
Carrie, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Bo and I.
Henry, I.
Konstantin, I.
Elfenbein, I.
Green, I.
Mila, I.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. I forgot who I was there for a second. Um, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Curtis moves. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, in seconds. I was really hoping Jose would second that one, but thank you, Julia.
Just to pass, I'm happy to rescind my, to pass around the second name.
All in favor?
Bo and I.
Henry, I.
Konstantin, I.
Elfenbein, I.
Green, I.
Mila, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. It is eight thirty-four and we are adjourned. Thank you everyone so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Christina. Take care.
Thank you.
Take care. Thank you.